Okay, good evening, everyone. I want to welcome you to our first Finance and Operations Committee meeting, Monday, January 24, 2022, ends around 6:02. Ms. Brown, would you like to call the attendance, please?
Paula Johnson?
Present.
Reagan Lamphier?
Yes.
Jessica Brown is present. We have a quorum. We also have in attendance Mr. Smith, Mr. Donovan, and four guests that we'll be introducing later. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the first thing on our agenda tonight, which do you want to go, Mr. Donovan? Because we have guests here.
Yes, we'll go with number one, which is ESS. These are the people from ESS. I'll let them introduce themselves, and then they're going to give us a presentation. This is a group that is, would help us find substitutes. So they'll go through the whole process with you. I think they're better at that than I am, so we'll let them do it.
Okay, thank you. I'll give you the floor.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Dan. And thank you all for giving us the opportunity to speak with you this evening. My name is Chris Jones, and I'm the Regional Vice President for Business Development for ESS. And I'm joined by Steve Gritzik. If you want to raise your hand, he's our Chief Operating Officer. Andy Hall is our Executive Vice President for our Northeast Operations. And Nui Tran is our newest representative here, lives right up the road in Hooksett, so for New Hampshire. So she's joining us this evening as well. We have a, we have a 20-minute presentation to run through with you guys. It's going to sort of cover all, all the bases in talking about the things that we do. And then hopefully you'll have some questions for us at the end that we'd be happy to answer. And if you have any questions as they come up, please feel free to ask. So Steve's going to take this first slide for us. Steve?
Yep, thanks, Chris. Yeah, so this is a little bit about who we are, our background. One thing to note about our company is we're exclusively focused in K-12 education. So that's primarily substitute teachers, substitute support staff, but we also have our own technology lines. We've got a virtual division. We've even got a small charter division. So really, anything that pertains to education is what the company is focused on exclusively. Overall, the company's been around for about 21 years, including the acquisitions. I've been here for about five now, and kind of looking at the map there, when we put ESS together about five years ago, we were in seven states. So you could see now we're in north of 30, and a lot of states have broken into this market. They see that there's a better way to get substitutes, to keep them engaged, to focus routinely with them, and really, it's enabled us to scale the business, to provide the service not only to the districts, but to our managers and our leadership team. We do business with about 750 districts, 3.5 million students served, and you can kind of see what our baseline kind of looks like there. Very stable management team. The management team in ESS, including myself, we've all been together for about 20 years. So we're familiar with each other. We've stuck together, and we've really focused in on serving the K-12 communities. We're very well-funded. We've got two equity firms that are, that are part of us, as well as management-owned. So we've all kind of got the proverbial skin in the game, and we really want to do everything we can to provide a good service out there. And we know K-12 school districts through our experience. It's all word-of-mouth communication. So if you take care of one client, they'll continue to refer you and so forth. So we've got over a 97% retention rate, and what's not in here is the growth rate. So we've also grown at about 20%. So we've kept our customers, we've grown our base, and we continue to have strong partnerships therein.
Thanks, Steve. So we've had numerous meetings with, with Dr. McKinney, with Dan, with Diane Carey over the past, geez, I don't know, eight months or so, I think it's, it's been. And, you know, we're now here at the point where we're pleased to talk to you guys and, and sort of, we had a meeting also last Monday with the principals and the assistant principal staff in the district. And we had about a 30-minute Zoom presentation, similar to what we did or doing here tonight. It was very well-received. They seemed very excited, and they had a lot of really good questions. So it's a fairly simple concept, what we're talking about. ESS will recruit, screen, credential, hire substitute teachers, paraprofessionals, and potentially even other support positions for National School District. Those individuals become ESS staff. So you're, basically, you're delegating the substitute staffing program to us. We are going to provide you with then a full-time, dedicated onsite manager that'll be here every day, working in the schools, working in the central office, interfacing with principals, with substitutes, helping to manage that whole process for you. Planning, scheduling, deploying, directing. The other thing that's key to know is that your existing substitutes, who may be working in the district now, and then that are liked by the schools and principals and teachers, those individuals can stay working in those schools, continuing with those assignments, just the way you've been doing it now. We're going to, we're not going to change anything. It's working. We're just going to build on it. We offer comprehensive substitute training that's, that's prior to when they're, when they're hired, and as they're going into assignments, making sure that they're prepared. We'll talk about that in a minute. All the payroll, insurance, benefits, workman's comp, all those costs that are associated with your, that you pay or associated with those substitutes, transfer to us. We manage all that for you. And we also will manage your frontline absence management system. And, and we're, you know, our team are experts in managing that system, really utilizing that technology and data to help run and schedule those substitute staff. The frontline system will remain licensed with Nashua. We'll just manage it for you. So some of the key outcomes that you could expect to see, again, it's comprehensive, daily, hands-on management. And, you know, in addition to giving you higher fill rates, you know, and that's the name of the game, more substitutes in, in your substitute pool dedicated to Nashua, that administrative burden that you're seeing that's occurring in the schools currently, whether it's in central office, in the HR office, or in the schools, you know, running through all that, trying to find, place substitutes, that transfers to us. So we manage that for you, in collaboration with you, though. The district, we're going to manage it, but the district will retain full control over who's in the schools, who's going where. If we need to move people around during the day, we can do all those things for you. Of course, increasing the fill rates to set goals with qualified, trained staff. We're going to onboard all your current subs, and those individuals will be exclusive to National School District through ESS. So we, you know, but you're not, don't too, too many at, right now, at this point, but that's one of the first things we're going to do, is make sure we retain those good folks, and they continue to be working in Nashua. Constant recruiting, that's the name of the game, 24/7, 365, building the substitute pool, recruiting from the local community that represent the community, the diversity of Nashua. And then the equity in the schools. When we looked at your absence data over the past, say, four years or so, it's clear to see that many schools have higher fill rates for substitutes than others. And, you know, we see this all the time, and there's reasons for that, one reason or another. But, you know, Andy, Steve, and he's, and his team are, are experts at really trying to, to make sure that every school has those substitute resources that, in the district, and one doesn't have necessarily more than another. You know, using creative strategies, like building-based substitutes, you know, that you're, I think you're doing some of that now already, but particularly these days, you really need to be creative in terms of how you're, you know, you're incentivizing and employing substitutes. And then substitute costs. All of the costs that the district currently pays for your substitutes reverts to ESS. So it's a transfer right off of your operating budget over to, to ESS.
Can I just stop for one minute? I got a message from Ms. Bishop that she wants to call, have Neil Claffey call into the meeting. He wants to be into the meeting.
Is that her phone number?
Yeah.
Hello, Neil? Hey, hold on, I'm going to try to put it on speaker here. Hear me now? Okay, uh, hold. All right, okay, Neil, say something.
Hello, how are you?
Okay, hold on just one second. I'm going to get you up a little bit in volume. All right, so you are...
There are five down, please.
Oh, can you count to five, Neil?
Yeah, one, two, three, four, five.
Okay.
Do you hear him okay out there?
Yeah, yes. Thank you.
All right, you are officially in the meeting.
Thank, thank you.
Okay, we're going to continue now.
Yeah, one of the, the big benefits we have is the onsite manager and how we train that individual, and how we kind of structure their days with the experience that we have. So the person would be dedicated, obviously, to the school system, point of contact, a local person. But one of the things, we know there's ebbs and flows when it comes to recruiting, when it comes to processing applications, when it comes to community events. So kind of behind the district manager, we have engagement teams that are spread out throughout the country, that'll help with recruiting pipelines, that'll help with recruiting, running advertisements, all those back-office functions, so that individual can really be out in the field, working with the community, working with, you know, grassroots approaches, getting out into events, whether it's football games or swim meets, you name it. That person really can, can get immersed in the community that way, so they're not getting stuck kind of behind a computer all day. So we feel like this is a very special thing that we do. We feel having the link to the other people out in the, in the company is a really big benefit. We do a lot of cross-functional things that enables that individual to really get skilled in their trade, to get out there and recruit substitutes and get them into the classroom, and then have the time really to stay with them. How was your day? How are things? What's going on out there? So the experience at the school level is positive for, for the substitute that they want to stay, and, you know, instead of working two days, work four days. You know, there's a lot of different ways to impact the classroom, other than just the sheer number of people, especially nowadays.
So one of the things that we talked about with the principals and assistant principals and the secretaries was just about what takes up your time, and how does our district manager and, you know, in-district manager and our operations team help you with those? And I think a lot of things, you know, they, they come in every day and they go, okay, how many absences do we have, and where do we need to go? And that's our job, to really start, when an absence goes in, when it's put in by a teacher or a paraprofessional, to start working on getting substitutes for the classroom, and not having it rely on the principal or their secretary every morning to be able to do that. So that is, you know, morning phone calls, night phone calls. We have a great texting program, email program, that we work with our substitutes to make sure that they know the jobs are available, and making sure where they know those jobs are available. You know, we have a, we have a...
Excuse me, sir. Could you say your name so the transcriber knows your voice while you're talking?
Oh, Andy Hall.
First time talking.
Okay, Andy Hall. There you go. And I think really that's where, you know, help them understand the system and how well you guys have Aesop now, but I think it can be used in so many more ways. And I think one of the things that we do very well is analyze the data. You know, when did absences come in? How often did they come in? What absence reasons? What days of the week? You know, what schools, you know, benefit more or less? And then when you kind of, we talk about recruiting, it's going to be how do we fill those gaps, where some schools might have a higher fill rate, some lower, you know, the equity is to move and hire new substitutes that want to work in those schools. Obviously, processing payroll and time sheets will process to us. We have a very, we call it WillSubPlus. We have a timekeeping system, our own, that's attached to Aesop, which substitutes can sign in online, through a kiosk, or through their phone. We have a geo-fencing, so that they can sign in if they're within 50 feet of the front of the school, and sign in that way. That way alleviates them having to go into the front office if they have to, and go right to the classroom. And we kind of walk through that in our training program, and it works very well. Then, from a business perspective, when they see the invoices, they'll see that so-and-so signed in, signed out, and that they're, that they received the pay for that day's work. If they don't sign in, sign out, the substitute knows they don't get paid. It's a simple process. They do it once and don't get paid. They usually don't do it twice. So, you know, obviously, through the hiring, you know, incidents are also another issue. They do happen. We have an incident portal, so the principals, the secretaries, the administration can put an, put an incident into our portal and let us know if there's something wrong. You know, did poor classroom management, was talking on the cell phone, you know, late to work? And then we deal with that. We, you know, we look at the situation, we talk to every sub immediately, and it could be removed from the classroom, removed from the school, removed from the district, depending, or retraining. You know, our goal is to retrain them, and some might be better in an elementary school versus the high school versus the middle. So our job is to find that niche for them during the hiring process and our training process, where they fit. But we do have an incident that you can call us, and it's handled immediately. It's handled within an hour of the incident coming in, even if they come in at 8 o'clock at night, we can remove, if they need to remove from assignment the next day, we take care of that and reach out to the sub. So obviously, the credentialing and just kind of the hiring, training, we're going to talk a little bit more about that. But I think talking about just, you know, from a payroll business perspective, it takes a lot of that work off of the business office also, the HR from the hiring and credentialing to the business office from payroll and invoicing. So kind of going into recruiting, I mean, that's really our niche. I mean, we do, all we do is look for substitutes. So our goal is, you know, you know, pre-COVID, we were very much in-person and out in the, you know, from football games to basketball games, to community events, to the PTO meetings, to back-to-school nights. We do it all. I mean, that's, that's our goal from our team, to be in the district, let ESS know that they can be, they can get hired and how they can get hired. A lot of times, they don't know. We do, if you look down the referral fee, they actually just, we just, January 1st, we just moved it to $100. So if a substitute or a district employee or a board member refers somebody, we pay, we pay $100. We've done some neat things with the parent-teacher organizations. I know they're usually the elementary school, maybe middle, where we've done fundraisers with them, where the money goes to them. So there's a lot of different things. But, you know, our goal is word-of-mouth. So we want our substitutes to be able to, you know, refer people, if they have somebody sitting at home that qualifies, either for a teacher position or a support position, and get them into the classroom. So I think it works very well. I mean, hiring events, traditional, I mean, we do lawn signs, flyers, and everything out there to get our name out there. We will have in-district hiring events. If we have one school versus another school that, you know, has low fill rates, we'll have hiring events in that school, and we try to tie in the principal, so he can come in and say, hey, this isn't such a bad place to work. But that's our goal, to really drive people to work and where they need to be worked. Obviously, we're in all the colleges, and we'll get involved in the community events also, you know, from that standpoint. These are just some samples of our, we have our own in-house marketing, do a fabulous job printing and taking care of everything for us. As you can see, we'll have all of our hiring cards, all of our information will be out in every school. We've done, you know, yard signs in the drive-through lines, where parents drop and pick off their children, you know, where they can see it. And, you know, so I think we have a great, and we will make sure we have a great presence online, you know, from Facebook to Indeed to Twitter, Instagram. If you look, you know, we have, we post all of our hiring events and everything that's going on in the district, and we'll partner with the school, say, on Facebook, to make sure that we're partners and people can see our information. Virtual events, obviously, through COVID, we've done a lot through virtual, you know, through Zoom, but taking the same premise, you know, to come in and do our hiring events, and people come in and get them hired through that process, and we've been very successful. We've adapted to that, and hoping as we get into the spring, we're going to get more back to the in-person. Just, you know, really, is our goal, and I know, you know, a lot of the question is, you go from an in-house program to a company like ESS, you know, and we want to make that a very smooth transition. And we have a lot of things that, you know, weekly pay is obviously, and I believe, Dan, you said you get, you pay weekly already, but that would continue for them, which was a great benefit for substitutes, because a lot of our districts don't pay weekly. Benefits, they're available for health, vision, dental, life insurance. We have plans for them that they typically can't get with the school district. They would have an opportunity to participate in them, and they can do that from day one. We do a lot of incentives. We'll do, we'll do, you know, gift giveaways every month for the person who worked the most, to, you know, different things like that, that really drive people to work. And that's, that incentives are driven by us, not as part of our management, you know, the program. We do that, and not, not at the cost of the school. We mentioned referral program. We have a thing called Perks at Work. It's a employee discount program. And then we just do a lot of live support newsletters, outreach to all of our substitutes. We do a monthly newsletter to them, usually has something about, could have, you know, just about, you know, who is the substitute of the month and where they are. And we run a lot of different programs like that, where you'll see, and every year, we run annual programs by every state. So a great incentive for, sort of, substitutes, and it's really, we make it as seamless as possible to move over, and, you know, really, we'll handle the hiring process, and it'll go pretty quickly, and Steve will talk a little bit about that. Our training program is really essential. Chris has a couple of training manuals with him, which we'll leave for you, one on the teacher side, one on the paraprofessional side. And we really target the classroom management, how to process a classroom, and how to teach a lesson plan. Because some people, if they don't, haven't been involved in education or getting into something new, and we want to make sure they're trained going in day one for what they're suited for. And that's really when we talk about the hiring process, making sure, as I mentioned earlier, that they're the right fit for the elementary school, the middle school, high school, because if they sub and they go into the wrong assignment, the first assignment, they don't come back. So, and that's really our goal, is fit them into the right assignment to be able to be successful. And like I said, with topics covered, you know, teaching behavior, classroom management, safety, IDEA, and we talk a lot about special ed training. So we'll talk a lot about the special needs classes, what they are, how they are, how to handle an eighth-grade, six-foot autistic student, you know, something like that. So we're really hands-on on what that looks like, and we'll continually do online training throughout the school year for them, and we'll do an annual program every year. And then in addition to that, whatever the school district wants us to add to our training, we will. So, and even simple things as where to park, you know, depending on where they are and how to access a school.
Yeah, and our training has also got an online component. So Andy talked about incidents earlier. So if there is a minor infraction, we, you don't want minor infractions to become major. So if it is reported, we can have them, they'll get an email and say you cannot have another assignment until you complete XYZ, and it's done through the Global Compliance Network. So the GCN will automatically do that, connect them to that module. There's ongoing training for people that want it. There's specialized training. Some districts have their own active shooter plan, so all that is there. It's compliant, and you know exactly who's been trained, and we can require that before they can accept jobs.
So this slide, again, it just touches on the equity piece, as I mentioned earlier, just a sort of a graphic and reinforcing the fact that we really try to analyze that data and, and really try to make sure that all the schools are on the same footing when it comes to the, to the attention that they're getting in terms of their substitute staffing. And then Steve, you want to talk about transition?
Yeah, we've obviously converted hundreds of districts out there, so we, we know what we're doing. We have a manual, that's our SOP, that's got all of our best practices in it, down to the letters to substitutes, anything you could think of, any aspect of the program. I don't know if you have a copy of that with you, but we could certainly share that with you. But it just, it shows you how to roll it out. Obviously, you know, this would be a crucial account for us, because I'm sure you're going to ask, where else are we in the state? And the answer is no. But, you know, that makes it all the much more important to us. And as you can see from the company's growth, we've broken into new states. We know exactly how to do this, and we know the first one is always the most important, because it's one and done. You know, you can't just go into a state and not be successful. We'll visit every school, talk to every principal. I think a lot of that is, you're really already ahead of the game, which is great. Transition all the existing substitutes, that's gone very well. And COVID has, I know we talk about it in person, but really, COVID has opened up doors to communication than people utilizing Zoom and online resources that maybe didn't before that learned it out of necessity. So it's really helped us to transition quickly, efficiently, and effectively, to whatever degree the person is comfortable. We do own our own applicant tracking system, so we're able to really simplify that for the, the in-house folks, to make it as easy as, as possible. A lot of times, we'll do gift cards or giveaways, just to let them know, you know, they do have to fill out, you know, their standard paperwork, et cetera, and some people get a little finicky about that. But we want to make it a warm experience, and, and it really ends up being a good line for them from a communication standpoint and just an engagement standpoint.
Yeah, this, this is a copy of the transition guide. We'll leave you guys a copy of this, so you can look, look through it later on. And, yeah, so, you know, this is the last slide, but, you know, obviously, there, this is, there's a lot to what we do. It's, it's basically, as I said, it's, it's a relatively simple concept, but we've got a very, very highly-developed process and system. So, you know, when it comes down to, you know, how it, how it impacts the district financially, that, as I mentioned before, so all of those costs that the district is currently paying for substitutes will, will fall to ESS. So even in the situation that you find yourselves in now, where your, where your fill rates are so low, and your substitute pool is so low, and you're, and you're needing to really build that back up over the, over the spring and into next school year, there's no additional cost for ESS to come in and to do those things to get you there. In terms of pay rates, the district has, will set the pay rate. So it's up to you what you decide to pay the substitutes. You know, we've talked about that some in our meetings already, and Dan and I have talked about it a little bit even last week, in terms of some ideas about that. But ESS will then charge a markup on top of that pay rate. So this is a mutually negotiated markup that, that we will, we will land on, and that a billing, the billing only occurs when we place a substitute in the district. So there's no transition costs. There's no other costs, other than the pay rate and the markup. And all the costs, including the onsite management, the regional team, all the payroll, everything, is included in the markup. There is no cost if the district wants to hire one of our substitutes to become a full-time teacher or paraprofessional. I mean, and we know you, you guys in many school districts get some of your teaching staff from your substitutes as, as they come up. So all that we ask is that you just give us some time to recoup some of the costs that we've put into bringing that person on and training that person and those kinds of things, and, and you can, you can go ahead and hire those, those folks at, at no cost to the district. I'd also just say that we're not a, we're not a staffing company. We're not a recruiting company for, for teachers for the district. I mean, we need to have an understanding that, look, these are our substitutes, and sometimes we get into situations where you're hiring so many of our staff that, you know, which, you know, we're keep, it's hard to keep up, but we, that's certainly not a problem, and there's no cost to do that. You have costs that the district pays in terms of class coverages. For instance, you know, you, you pay a paraprofessional, one of your district paraprofessionals, I think it's 38, maybe, I think, Dana, you indicated it's maybe moving up to $50 for, that, that stipend that's paid to that paraprofessional to cover a teacher's classroom. So, you know, that, that's on top of what you're already paying that parent. So for ESS to provide the district with the subs opposed to that, not only is it more cost-effective, but what's the opportunity cost of that paraprofessional having to cover a teacher's classroom, when really, they should be, you know, they're really needed in what they're doing? So, and then, it's turnkey. But we're going to manage to your budget. So, you know, your budget is key, and, and your budget today for this year, and I, and I know Dan's going to be talking about, and you guys are going to be developing your budget for next school year soon, whatever it is that you decide and you get to, and hopefully in consultation with us, we're going to manage to that. Okay? So, you know, but you also need to sort of look at, okay, well, where do we want to get to from a fill rate perspective, and how are we going to get there, and how long is that going to take? You know, and it may, it may be a bit of a process, but we'll work with you to make sure that we manage to that number for you. So, you know, we're really excited about working with Nashua. So, you know, we're really excited about working with Nashua. As Steve mentioned, it would be our first school district client in New Hampshire. And I think it's tremendous application. We feel that, you know, there's an excellent base of potential substitutes here in Nashua for us to recruit from. We would be the first ones in, in terms of your peers and neighboring school districts. And, you know, and I think your expectation should be that you guys would quickly rise to being someone who's really got a strong pool of substitute that's engaged in working in the district when you compare yourself to maybe some of the surrounding school districts in the state. But we're really excited about that, and thank you for your time very much. And if you have any questions for us, we'd be glad to answer.
Does any members of the committee have any questions? Ms. Brown?
I guess I do. Well, I'm really pleased with the presentation. I think that there's, seems like there's a lot of potential here. My first question would be, do you make recommendations for pay rates comparatively to the area? I mean, you mentioned that the district sets that.
Yeah, we would talk about that, and we would look at that together and make recommendations. Absolutely.
And is the fee for your services then a percentage on top of that? Is that kind of how it works?
It's on top of the pay rate, so it covers all the overheads, all your taxes, so you wouldn't have to pay those taxes anymore, unemployment, workers' comp, and obviously our gross margin, et cetera.
That's my question for now. I might have one more in a second. Go ahead.
Ms. Lempier?
I just wanted to say that many years ago, I was a substitute teacher for a brief amount of time, and it was really hard. And one of the most difficult parts of it was that I didn't get any training and felt very overwhelmed and had no real way of gauging how I was doing. So your substitute training program sounds like it would really benefit the district. So, thanks.
Great.
Yeah, and that's why the engagement part, you know, people ask, like, what's the secret sauce? And it's like, the secret sauce is the people. It's just communicating and having a procedure in place to communicate with them to say, how did your day go? You know, because that's when people leave, is, you know, the kids torture them, or something happens, or they don't feel supported from an administrator, you know, you name it, and they just say, I'm not doing this anymore.
And it's really nice having an onsite manager, because that manager can zip out to one of the schools. They can have office time so they can come to see that person. So it's really nice. And one of the things we didn't mention too, is we have two engagements teams also. So we have a client engagement team, which works out of locations, which you can call and email. So all the administration, the principals, the secretaries can call our client engagement team. If they have a question about an assignment, they need to put an assignment in, they have a question about the system. So in addition to our onsite manager, we have a team that's there at 6:00 in the morning till 9:00 at night and later, because we're on the West Coast, that they can get questions answered. So that's really nice. And then we have an employee engagement team, which is really for your teachers and our substitutes to call in, same time, if they have questions about certain things, even payroll, different things like that, that they can call in and get an answer to also, in addition to our onsite and our New England team that'll be, you know, participating in Nashua.
Mr. Claffey, do you have any questions?
Not at the moment. Thank you.
Okay, I have a couple. So we do background checks, you do all the background checks. And any references from any states close to New Hampshire? Did you bring any references on?
We can get your references. We've shared some references with superintendent, and many from neighboring New England states, Connecticut in particular, where we have a number of districts that are of the size of type of Nashua. But we'll get you all the references that you would like, yes.
Okay. So I know you're not an employment agency, but you almost act like one because you take over all the payroll and you do all that, basically like you would go with an agency. So it's kind of like the way you're doing it almost is, but it isn't.
It's, I would probably liken it more to a management company. We're a management services company, so, and dedicated to, just to what we do. All we do is substitute staffing. And we do also a lot of permanent, you know, paraprofessional staffing as well in places throughout the country. But, yeah, it's not an agency kind of thing. I mean, these people are our employees. We offer them benefits. They're not 1099 employees, you know? And the team really puts together the whole management of the program.
Well, some agencies, if you work for like a temp agency, you're theirs unless the company wants to hire you. What else did I want to ask? I just lost my train of thought here. Anybody else have any questions while I get my train of thought back?
I have another question. I know that it must vary from city to city and district to district, but what is like the average amount of changes in the fill time for the districts?
I mean, I think what we do is, you're going to have your starting point from where you are today, and that's really working with the district administration and the principals to work on what does that look like? Do we get up 10% in the first 60 days and 20%? You know, our goal is to sit there and say, we have to recruit, and we have to look at, you know, what those numbers look like. And, you know, we can go from 50% up to 80% inside of six months with the recruiting plan that we put in place. So it's really, you know, how we get involved, and it's really, you know, what we have to talk about. When you talk about staffing and employment, we're a partnership. We're in a partnership with the district, and really that communication that we have with the Board of Education, with the administration, down to the principals, the secretaries, the substitutes, is really the key to how, when we talk about managed services, that's our goal. But I think us developing a plan and looking at your fill rates the way they are and saying, okay, here's where we want to get to, and, you know, if we came in and started in, you know, March, where do we want to get to by May and by June? And then what do we want to look like by the time we get to September? And really set goals for what those hiring numbers look like and getting people to work.
Now, this is going to be a contract?
Yes, ma'am.
And how long is the contract for?
Generally, you know, we look to get an initial three-year term. But, you know, that's negotiable. I mean, we're going to be going out and hiring an individual from the community to serve as an onsite manager. So we, you know, it's good to be able to let that person know that there's, we have some time with the contract. And, you know, Dan has a copy of it as well, and, you know, you've got the ability to cancel the contract should things not be working out the way you want them to. So it's a pretty simple contract, yeah.
So with your hiring, where we haven't been able to find candidates to come in, is it because you're offering the benefits and you're offering more than we're offering substitute teachers? You're offering their health insurance, you're offering a 401K. Is it because you're giving them more than what we give because they're sub, they don't come in, you know, they're not entitled to it? I'm just, you know, because I'm seeing what's happening in the community.
Question. Yeah.
From my point of view, one of the things they're going to bring is, we don't do a good job of recruiting.
Right.
Especially substitutes. We've never done it. We don't have the staff. We don't have a recruiter in the district. I don't think a great idea would be to hire a recruiter and expect that we'd suddenly get a whole lot more subs. I think this is probably a better option. So, you know, that's, they've talked a lot about it. That's one of the things that they do that they're good at. And it's not easy to be good at recruiting. That's a skill set. That's a process.
Yeah. And recruiting is it. Getting involved in the community and outside of the community. There's people outside of Nashua that will want to work in Nashua. So our job is to really kind of dive into that and get out and talk to people. There's so many times, back to school nights, you talk to a lot of parents, I never knew I could be a substitute. I never knew I could work a couple of days a week. Different, you know, just really getting out there and saying what you can and can't do, and, you know, getting them on board.
And then just engaging, following up, training, you know, following those processes that we shared here. It's hard to say without kind of canvassing the existing sub pool, but we will ask, you know, what do you like? What do you not like? What are you thinking? Just to get their feedback. And, you know, feedback is what it is. I think you guys know that, being school officials, you got to take some stuff with a grain of salt. But at least listening in and saying, hey, what could improve this experience for you?
Ms. Brown, go ahead.
So that's actually exactly what I found most engaging about your presentation was the, it's people-centered, it's looking into the community, reaching out to what we've already got here. I like the idea that there's going to be an onsite personal experience. And I do think that benefits long-term is good for substitute retention. I see a lot of potential in this, and, you know, right now, I think it's, we are in a situation where we're pretty desperate for substitute teachers here in Nashua. Can I actually ask, Dan, I mean, you brought it forward, so obviously you recommend it, what is, what would you recommend for a motion or for, like, are we just pushing this forward to discuss the contract next steps?
That's what I was going to ask. That was my question. What did you want us to, what's the next step you want?
What I was hoping was tonight, I think the next full board meeting is next Monday. But if we could move forward a motion tonight to approve administration to negotiate a contract with ESS, and then we could get the full board approval on Monday, and then we could, and follow up with the contract. But I think if we could at least get there, assuming the full board's, you know, behind us, but I'd like for them to, you know, if we can get it to them by Monday, then it's really what's just, simply what's left is the contract, so.
Go ahead. If we were to be able to pass this through, how long do you think we'd be able, how long do you think we'd be able to start engaging your services and seeing some results?
So, I mean, obviously, we'd be in here the next day. We have a transition guide, which Steve talked about, which we say, oh, sorry, sorry about that. So Steve mentioned our transition guide. We'd be in the next day. So once it's board approved, our team will come in with Stephanie Ritz, who's our leader in New England, along with myself and our team, and we sit down with administration and we go through and we start developing the plan, the systems, the processes and everything. I would say 45 days, start to finish, and we can be up and running, and we start a recruiting plan, and we get the person, our onsite person hired, and you have our team involved. So we're probably, I'm going to say 45 to 60 days that we'd be up and running.
So we're talking mid-March, the end of March?
I would say, let's look at, let's look at your spring break and see when that is. I think that's what, April? So, but if we do it next week, yeah, I mean, you're talking about the end of March, early April, at the latest.
Ms. Lempier?
So you said that the amount of money that you make is based on the markup? Now, if you hire less substitutes, does that mean that you make less money?
We only get paid if we put somebody in a seat.
Yep.
Excellent.
Our goal is to fill the seats.
That's exactly what it means. I mean, if we don't place, yeah, so, yeah, it's, we call it the double whammy. So not only do you, you know, you don't, your customer, it's the proverbial lose-lose. Like, we win together, we lose together.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'm so glad that you made that clear.
Mr. Claffey, do you have any questions?
I just had one. I was wondering if you've worked in a district with an unemployment rate that's similar to ours? I think, I'm sure at Nashua, but I'm 2%. Got to be a challenging environment. Have you worked in a district with a similar tight labor market?
Yeah, we have. I mean, same size, you know, what is it, about 16 schools? I think 12 elementary, a couple of middles, a couple of high. So, I mean, we've worked a lot of that in a lot of different, you know, areas with low unemployment. We've dealt with this COVID issue about people who want to work and don't want to work. And really part of that for us, and in a lot of situations, we brought our substitutes in and had the superintendent and the administration, the principals talk to the substitute, thanking them for working and thanking them for coming in. And it's really something we look at, you know, as a benefit to the subs, really get that comfort level. So we have worked in a lot of different scenarios with regards to unemployment and COVID, and, you know, we've been successful.
Yeah, we, I mean, we've really seen it all. And Steve at his level is able to, you know, pass down those best practices that we've seen in other districts and other states and to all of our clients, so that we can really get that broader perspective on what works and what doesn't.
So could you, could you point to a community somewhat similar to ours where you've had success recently?
Well, we went into, and just in the last 18 months, we've gone into Norwalk, Connecticut, Bristol, Connecticut, and Waterbury, Connecticut. So we've gone into those three fairly large-sized districts and been successful. So, and been able to enhance their program, build their, and continue to build on their program to where we are today.
Are you all set, Mr. Claffey? Are you all set? Ms. Brown?
Yes, just one more question. How would long-term substitutes work? Does that work differently? Would you, we still be in there?
Yeah, I mean, the long terms are based on the district. You know, a lot of times we work on the union contracts, however length that they are, usually 90 days. So same process. If you, we have a long-term portal. So if you have somebody going out on a medical leave or maternity, you would put that in now, say it's in for two months or three months from now, and then we begin sourcing. So second-grade teacher, high school science, whatever it might be, you put that in, we start sourcing for candidates, and then we would give the district two or three of our top candidates to interview, and they would have the choice to pick for that long-term position.
Is there any other questions? Okay, then I'm going to move to approve with administration to negotiate a contract with ESS. And this will be sent to the full board.
Second?
Okay.
Ms. Lempier?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Ms. Brown votes yes, motion passes.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in with the presentation.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And if I could just get that information that you just wanted to leave?
Yes. Okay, I'm going to move to transition. This is from you.
Okay.
Transition.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Bye, everyone.
Okay, so this one, the best. Okay. Next on the agenda is the technical fee proposal.
Okay, this is a technology fee proposal. Now, I believe in curriculum, or, I mean, policy last week, we talked about a student-parent guardian Chromebook agreement, and I believe that was approved and is going to move forward to the full board next week. But specifically, what we just want to talk about at this meeting is the fee itself. As you know, we have fees for buses, we have fees for athletics, we have fees for parking, et cetera. So what we'd like to do is agree upon what the amount will be and that we can, in fact, charge the fee. So after that gets approved, then we will need, potentially need some legislation to make sure that, because I think the plan here is whatever this fee amount will be, we'll sort of collect it and use it to cover repairs and losses and things like that. So we need to set up the correct type of fund, so the money can go into that fund and it'll stay there, and we can use it as these issues come up. But that'll be the second part. I think tonight, if we can just, the suggestion in the policy that exists make sure that, because I think the plan here is whatever this fee amount will be, we'll sort of collect it and use it to cover repairs and losses and things like that. So we need to set up the correct type of fund so the money can go into that fund and it'll stay there, and we can use it as, as these issues come up. But that'll be the, the second part. I think tonight, if we can just, the suggestion in the policy that exists at this point in time is $25 a year per student. That will be for all students. I don't know if there was any discussion about what about if a certain student can't approve it? Do we want to have somebody in the district to maybe give waivers to a student or a family? You know, that, that might be part of what this, this fee would be, but, so I guess the suggestion is to approve a $25 per student fee for a school-issued Chromebook, assuming that they want one.
Any questions from the committee? Ms. Brown?
So, just to clarify, at the end of the year, if everything's returned undamaged, do they get the fee back? Or is it, this is?
No, that would, that would build up, and we would use that to pay for the things that don't come back.
Okay. And we would consider a, maybe, whether it's connected to low-income, free and reduced lunch, something, would there be some kind of application for families that couldn't afford the fee?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm sure we would probably want to do that at some point. I think the, the plan in the beginning, though, is not, for example, like with our, our bus fee, all free and reduced students don't pay a bus fee. The problem is, with free lunch for all, we don't really have a good track of all our free and reduced lunch any longer. So I think the idea behind keeping it relatively low would be 25 for all students who want to use a district Chromebook to bring it back and forth. And, but like I said, I don't, I don't know who it would be, but there would be someone when the district would say, okay, this maybe is a refugee child that just came here a month ago, they don't really have, we'd like to waive it. So maybe that can be done at, at some level. It would, you know, maybe the principal level or something like that.
And I will say, from a cost perspective, as opposed to purchasing a new Chromebook or something, $25 is pretty modest.
Yes, yes. And, you know, I think, too, you could look at, if we get the fees set up, if it builds up, then I guess we could say, okay, this, this year, we're not going to charge it, you know? But I think, I think based on our very hurried passing out of the Chromebooks back a year and a half ago, there was significant damage and items not returned. So I think if we want to do this, we should have some sort of a fee just to cover those costs. Because if it, if it were to continue at that level, that was a fairly significant level. It was kind of surprising to me, to be honest with you, but.
I think it was surprising to a lot of us, the damage in Chromebooks that didn't come back. That's why I kept suggesting that we needed some type of an agreement here and a fee because people need to own it. And usually, when you have to put some money down, you own it a little bit more, you're more responsible because it's just not free. And I felt that the taxpayers shouldn't have to pay for all of this, the damages that happened. It was unfortunate, but that's what happened. So I said to Mr. Rodriguez, I was happy that this came through. It looks good. Hopefully, the $25 will add up, and we won't have very many damaged Chromebooks coming back, and so we won't have to replace them, and costs, the cost won't be that high. So what are you looking for from us tonight, exactly, again?
Probably a motion to approve a technology fee of $25 per student per year for school-issued Chromebook.
Okay. Did you get that?
Yes. Would you like us to approve the fee or approve the policy?
The fee, because I think the policy will come through via the policy committee to the full board.
All right. I'll make that motion. Move to approve a $25 technology fee.
I'll second it.
Ms. Lampier?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Ms. Brown votes yes, motion passes.
Now we have the sidebar with the AFSCME. Does this need to be non-public or no?
No, we're actually going to pull this item.
Okay.
Information came forward today. That probably doesn't make sense for this to be discussed at this point in time.
Okay.
Okay.
Perfect. So now we have the Franklin Street contracts, and I believe that's you, Mr. Smith?
Yes. For the public, Sean Smith, Director of Plant Operations for the school district. So last summer, we hired a harem and architects and engineers to do our assessment for Franklin Street. Actually, that was a year, over a year ago. Then we hired them to do a schematic design, up through schematic design, for renovations that are going to occur this summer. Those renovations incurred, included the construction of two emergency egress stairways on either side of the school, upgrades for ADA compliance, modernization of the bathrooms, that sort of thing. It's really a true, two-track project. The other track is with ESER funds, and that is primarily with, with electrical and mechanical systems. And those are, those are going through state approval process. In fact, the superintendent just signed those forms the other day and went back to the state. We already had conceptual approval for over $5 million for that project. So the other part of the project is with harem, and they're doing the design work. We have not identified the full scope of that work yet. It's still being worked on, but two, two issues are going on. One is the construction of those two egress stairways. To do that, we have to determine what the geotechnical, what the soils look like underneath, where those are going to be installed. When you install stairways of this size, it's going to be all, it's a three-story stairwell, so you're going to have concrete footings and that sort of thing. And so the architect wants to know what's underneath there. So that's why we're going to hire the geotechnical engineer. Secondly, we want to, as you know, the school is very constrained as far as traffic goes. If you've ever been there, when schools starting up in the morning or leaving you afternoon, it's quite a bit of traffic. You have a lot of parents dropping off, picking up kids, plus a number of school buses. So we want to hire a traffic consultant. What that consultant will do, give us any recommendations on how to improve traffic flow, potentially to modify somewhat the site. For example, on Charles Street. So if you're facing this school main entrance, the left street coming down, the left-hand side is Charles Street, we could put, do a little indentation on that side for school buses to pull into, get them out of traffic. If Franklin Street is the street right in front of the school, if, once you pass the playground, which is the first thing you'd come to if you're coming from Main Street, you could, again, do an indentation and have a pull-in place for school buses or parent drop-off or whatever. So those are the sorts of things a traffic study would, would give you. They do traffic counts to tell you when and where, how many people, how many cars, and that sort of thing. It's going to be more important that we do this. It's already challenging, but it's going to be more challenging next year when we populate the second floor of the school after these egress stairways are built. So I put together a request for proposals and bids. They were both on the city's website for at least three weeks, four weeks, contacted some local vendors I was, I was aware of, and we got two bids for each of the two pieces of work. So for the first one, the traffic analysis, received the two bids. The low bid was the Engineering Corporation. They are primarily out of Massachusetts, but do have an office in New Hampshire. And they outbid slightly, it was 19,000 to 21,000. Have not worked with them before, but they appear to have done good, similar work elsewhere. Vanessa Associates was our traffic engineer for the middle school project, still is, as a matter of fact, they've done excellent work on that as well. But knowing how we like to go with the lower bid, I recommend the Engineering Corporation. For geotechnical, again, two bids. SLR International actually purchased a local company in the past year or so, that local company we worked with, again, on the middle school project, so we're very familiar with them. They are the lower bid of the two, and they also, again, worked on the middle school project as our geotechnical engineer. So my recommendation is that we award Engineering Corporation the contract amount of 19,000 for traffic analysis, and to SLR International, the amount of $2,800 for geotechnical services. Both of these efforts will support the architect when they finalize their designs, and funds will come out of the school district's deferred maintenance account. Any questions?
Yes. You're talking about a traffic study. Could we have asked the city to do a traffic study for us?
We actually met with them back in early January, I think, and they were the ones that kind of considered, suggested we do something like this. They, I don't know, they don't feel that's really their place to do this. Yeah, we did the same thing with, with a middle school project down on the new middle school site, going down Buck Meadow and all that stuff on, at Penachuk. We ended up hiring a consultant to do all the design work, to do all the traffic studies. And then we presented that to the city staff to review, and we provided recommendations, and they accepted them. So it seems to be the way they do business.
Well, they used to do traffic studies and traffic counts. Is this DPW?
DPW, yes.
EPW.
So in my time here, I can remember years ago, they had a traffic branch. There was all, it was under, I'm not sure if they were under DPW at that point, but they, they've since absorbed that into the street department or something. They have, the supervisor of that group is now, works on the DPW staff and the engineering. So they've downsized what they did before, what they used to do, and that's probably leads to why we're doing business the way we are now.
Okay, any questions from the committee?
No. I would suggest that maybe we do two separate motions for the contracts?
We can. Okay, I'm going to, to recommend that the Board of Ed award contracts to the Engineering Corporation in the amount of $19,000 for traffic studies, for traffic analysis.
Second? And Ms. Lampier?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond, I'm, sorry, Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Ms. Brown votes yes.
Okay. I recommend that the Board of Ed approve the award contract to SLR International in the amount of $2,800 for geotechnical services to support the architectural design of Franklin Street's school. Funds will come from the school district deferred maintenance account. And this is for both of them, deferred maintenance?
Yes.
So on the first one, we'll need deferred maintenance account.
Second? And Ms. Lampier?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Brown votes yes, passes.
Okay. Now, is this it with you, Mr. Smith?
I'm here for, for the air quality discussion as well.
Oh, yeah. I just wanted to see if this was, okay. So, update on the air quality.
I saw that we wanted to talk about, I didn't bring anything to prepare for it. I can tell you, we've finished the renovations at Fairgrounds Middle School. So basically, we have one, two, three, four generations of HVAC equipment in that school. The original equipment, much of it was replaced, one is renovated in the 1990s. We added a lot of equipment in the tech ed wing, which, as you face the front of the school, it's the right-hand side, so includes the chorus, the music, tech ed-type programs. That was done probably five years ago. And then, just through the recent renovations, we added some additional new equipment, primarily in the front office wing, but also in what we call the quadrangle area, so as you go around the big circle in the middle of the school. So I feel pretty good about the air quality. We've had some issues with it, which is not, it's understandable, anytime you install new systems, there's always a shakedown. And, and we've seen that with that school. And we've actually did commissioning for all the new systems. Commissioning is a process where you bring in an independent consulting engineer, they take a look at all the systems, they look at the design, make sure everything is operating as designed, and then if they see something amiss, then they let us know, and it's remedied.
So?
We, we saw that, we saw how that was working, we felt good about it. Then we went back to the joint special and asked that they allow us to recommission the old systems. So they're probably about two-thirds to three-quarters away completing that work as well. And it's been very handy. We've identified a number of, of things that are not working as originally designed, but it is getting back up to speed, and there have been fewer and fewer complaints as we've gotten into the winter. Let me pause there. At that school, we want to go school by school, or?
So what about the high schools and the elementary? I know that we're renovating two of the middle schools.
Yes.
And we're going to have a new middle school. So what about the air quality at the high school and the elementary schools? Because here's my thing, and I keep talking about the UV lights or other things that we can do. I mean, everybody's afraid to go into a school. Everybody's afraid that they're going to get sick in the school. It's that fear factor. So what are we doing to try to sanitize? And it's coming down to sanitize the schools. So then this way, this fear factor isn't there anymore. It's, it's, everybody has been scared so badly with COVID and Omnicrom that they're afraid to do anything anymore, and we can't, you know, with our students and our teachers, we need them in school, the teachers in the classrooms to teach. I mean, look at what we're having with the substitutes, you know, with the classrooms, and we need our students in the classroom. So that's what my concern has been. It's been since day one, you know, two years ago almost, when I saw a doctor on TV and he talked about his UV lights in the ceilings, it doesn't radiate down on anybody, but it sanitizes. So what are we doing with that? I mean, it, I, I keep going back to these things because I keep going back to them.
Well, we certainly have been over the last two years with the situation, the COVID, looking at all the technologies. We've had various demonstrations done for us. We have, and continue to use the better filters in all the schools. So that's, continues to, to be implemented wherever we have HVAC systems. We continue to sanitize. We are, we've cut back due to manpower issues, I just watched the presentation on that, on the spray sanitizing. So we've been focusing on the bathrooms, water fountains, that sort of thing. But all the teachers, every classroom has access to plenty of wipes, basically whatever they ask for, we've provided to them. So they have everything we need. We've looked at other techno, so we've also been providing air purifiers pretty much wherever asked. So I've, I've gone through the administration. At one point, Adam Marku was talking to me about, you know, can we get these to him? I said, well, I'm just not going to hand these things out like candy. It, they cost some money to them, and I think they're about $1,700 a unit. They're good units, and they have a five-stage filtration system, so it's not just a paper filter, but it's also, there's some UV in there, there's various types of filtration. If you have a good, if you're in a school with good ventilation, my feeling is you, these things aren't going to add very much to it, particularly if you have a window accessible. In winter time, that doesn't help you very much if it's cold outside. In winter time, that doesn't help you very much if it's cold outside. But as teachers have come to me and said, "Okay, I live," I don't live, "I work in a classroom or a small learning environment, there's four walls, there's no windows, I'm worried about the ventilation." So I've gone to each and every space where they've asked for those, and pretty much every single time, I've given them one of these units. We just received 20 more that we purchased. So that's kind of been our approach. We know which schools, when all the ventilation systems are operating properly, they're getting at least three air exchanges an hour, which should be sufficient. Under COVID, you'd like to have more, but it is what it is. We have three air exchanges in all our schools. The newer schools have better, they can have up to eight air exchanges. I know with Harriman, engineers and architects, that's what they provide is eight air exchanges. So you know what Fairgrounds Middle School, what Pennechuck, at the new middle school, that's what we're gonna have. The older schools, so we talked as a Board of Education administration, we know that Birch Hill and Main D are kind of next on our list of schools we wanna address. Those ventilation systems are quite old. We spent quite a bit of money, two years in a row, buying, replacing unit ventilators in each of those two schools. We could very easily spend a lot more, I'm hoping we can use Esser funds to replace all that at some point. Mr. Donovan and I have been talking about, and I think he's gonna approach you all on that at some point, right?
Correct.
So let me ask you a question, I'm gonna interrupt. So what kind of units are you using, air purifiers that you're using for those rooms that need?
There are standalone units, it's a plug-in unit, pull up any wall out and plug it in. It's, again, it's a five-stage filtration system, and it, our estimation from the data, we've seen they work quite well.
I have a question.
Sure.
So, just, obviously I haven't been on the board before, but just from watching the news and everything, I hear about how the Esser funds, one of the ways they want it to be used is for ventil, improving ventilation in schools. So I didn't know if you guys have a plan already for that, or is it something that you're gonna work on, or what that might look like?
Well, that's all.
Yes, that's, we're working on that now, we've, as far as HVAC systems in schools, the schools we're looking to spend Esser funds on. Now, keep in mind, they make it sound so easy, you just apply and they give you the money, not quite. It's a very significant process to go through to get construction funding, which HVAC is considered construction funding in Esser. Not to say we can't do it, it just takes time, but we are Franklin Street, we're spending money there. We're going to be spending money at the back wings of the three elementary schools that we didn't complete.
Charlotte, Fairgrounds, and Ledge.
Yes, and so those are sort of in the works, and then we plan on moving forward with Birch and Main Dunstable because of the ages of their systems. We sort of look at this as an opportunity using the Esser funds, let's say the renovation project might cost $10 million, the costs that Esser will cover may be five or six of those, because they'll cover HVAC, they'll cover boilers, they'll cover windows, things like that, they won't cover some of the other things. So we're trying to sort of get that done while we have the funds available, which will be over the next couple of years. But yes, and I did bring, I think it was in November, sort of what we've spent thus far with Esser funds, and I'll be updating that and bringing that to this committee in the next probably month or so, but working with Mr. Smith and some other people to sort of define the construction, because it takes, A, it takes time to do it, then it takes time to bid it, and then it takes time to get it done. So you have to sort of fit that within the timelines of when you have to spend the money. So.
Okay, thank you, that's, thank you for letting me know more about what the process is.
So those schools were Birch Hill, Main Dunstable, and which, which other one?
Well, Franklin Street, we've already mentioned that.
Yeah, I know Franklin Street, Charlotte, Ledge.
Ledge, Charlotte, and Fairgrounds Elementary Schools.
And then Birch, Main Dunstable?
Yeah.
Is that it?
Yep.
Okay. So we, okay, again, I'm gonna go back to, I understand we're doing the, updating the HVAC, that has to be done because we need that. But again, I'm asking, are we gonna do anything? I understand the wipes, we're wiping down the water fountains, we're wiping down the bathrooms, we're staffing, we're having staffing problems there too, right?
Yes.
So again, why wouldn't we wanna do some type of UV that would sanitize, that would take the place so we could have constantly sanitary, the areas would be sanitized? And it would offset viruses, bacteria, you know? I guess I do, maybe I run off a little bit, and I do too much investigating and research, but I'm trying to, you know, find out where we, again, where we have staff and parents that are scared to send their kids to school because of COVID, and it's, you know, UV lights just doesn't take care of COVID, it does other things, you know, staff infections, bacterial infections, you know, could Esser finds, funds be used for this too, for, you know, COVID-related?
The answer to that is potentially, but keep in mind, just like we're adding these air purifiers, over time, these things need to be taken care of with filters and this and that, and any sort of UV, it doesn't last forever. So you've gotta realize that if you're going to put in millions of dollars of Esser funds, and then every two years, you're gonna turn around and pay another million dollars to keep the thing going. I think we've talked about the UV lights, and we had someone come in, they did a test, it's kind of one of those things that, when you look at the, what they show you, it's a nice sales pitch, I'm not 100% it works as much as they say it works, they're trying to sell us something. And I think, to be honest with you, the way I think Sean and I are headed now, let's spend the money on technology that we know works, improvements that we know work, that we need, we're going to have to do anyway, instead of doing that. Now, we haven't thrown it out the door, but on the other hand, I mean, I'm hoping this spring, things are better, and, but putting in a, you know, a $3 million system, and then turning around and having to pay a million dollars every couple of years after that, I'm not sure, long-term, we're gonna come up with a million dollars. Whereas the HVAC system, you know, it doesn't have that cost.
So Mr. Donovan's referring to induct system, so for your benefit, you weren't around. Almost all of our schools have air handlers, which handles lots of air, all the air gets to all the classrooms, all the other spaces, ductwork, ducts. And one company provided, developed a system for air purifying that is a subset of those little plug-in units that we use, and they did some testing at an elementary school and a south high school, and did it during summer school, and did some results before anybody was in the classroom, and then after. And the results were, from what we could tell, good, showed a decrease in all the little bad bugs that are in the systems. That was a Seanism, I wasn't sure what kind of scientific word to use, but it did show a dramatic decrease in that sort of stuff. But as Mr. Donovan stated, it would cost a couple million dollars to install those. Any of these systems, including those plug-in units, we have to replace the filters after two years or less. Those systems and the ducts, it's all sort, there's a replacement cost for doing those. We also have looked at standalone UV lighting systems. Problem with those, when we looked at them, originally it was the, you bring them into a classroom, you set it down, you have to leave, because you can't stare at those things, it's bad for people. So then I have a custodian putting in the classroom, leaving it there for half an hour, going, you know, babysitting in the UV light all night long, and I already have enough trouble keeping people, not, you know, having enough time to clean, much less babysitting one of these things. Not that they're not doing a good thing by sanitizing the space, but we just didn't have time to do that either. Very, very recently, they're developing robotic ones. You set up this, they cost 100, I haven't even talked to Mr. Donovan about this, it costs $100,000 apiece. You have to leave all your spaces open, all the doors, all the classrooms, everything has to stay open all night long. You can program this device in, and it goes with a UV light and sanitizes everything. So, so I know, it's how much do you wanna spend? And you'd have to buy one of these for every single school, maybe several if you wanna do the high schools.
What do you guys think the HVAC is gonna cost for all the schools you're gonna replace in?
The ones that we plan to do? As Mr. Donovan said, I mean, we expect Birch Hill, Main D, the total projects to be somewhere in a neighborhood of 12 million to renovate them, and the HVAC piece is maybe seven, seven and a half million. But we're also replacing roofs, we're also installing walls in those two schools, because they're open concept. And a lot of that stuff could be potentially covered by Esser. So it's seven, call it seven, call it eight, so that's 16 million for those two schools. We're at 6 million for Franklin Street.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
All set?
All set.
Good.
You too.
Thanks, Sean.
Next thing on the agenda is invoices over $10,000 annual report.
Okay, so, back a few years ago, it's in Section D of your policies, the board policies, I don't remember the exact, D what, but under fiscal management, there's a requirement that we provide a list of all invoices over $10,000 for the previous school year. So typically, I do this, school year ends in June, takes three or four months for everything to be wrapped up as far as closing the books, et cetera, at City Hall, and then I usually prepare this in December, I'm a month late this year. But basically, what I do is I get a download from, from the system, which shows every single invoice over $10,000. I then summarize those by vendor, that's what you see here, and then what I try to do is put them by category. So for example, your first one, you have utilities. So you can see, we spent 1.697 million with Eversource. Well, you know, they supply the electricity, there's not a whole lot more to say about that, but, so what I do is, like I said, I summarize all, so that's a list of all the invoices over $10,000 for the year that we paid to Eversource, added together. So some of these numbers could be 10 or 12 different invoices that equal that, some could be one invoice. So then what I, after I sort of sort it by type, I then try to sort of give you a description of what it is, and then whether it was bid, and whether if it was approved by the Board of Education. So the first, just run through them quickly, the first one is the utilities. The only one that's sort of a one-time there is, you notice at the bottom, TransAct Communications. To get the fiber to the Franklin Street School, it ended up taking a lot more than we thought it would. We had to run it through pipes across the river from City Hall to get it down there, and so most of that $27,000 was related to getting fiber to the Franklin Street School. They also did a couple of other things, but, so that's a one-time cost, and you wouldn't see that next year. Transportation, obviously, the first student contract, and then Durham School Services, that's one of the smaller bus companies that we use for out-of-district students. Rentals are the Conway Arena for hockey, that's, we have that every year with them, and then the Brady Sullivan was the Brentwood School Rent when we had the building, keep in mind, that was last year, out on Amherst Street, that cost is now gone since they're in the Franklin Street building. Special education tuition, these are all the schools, once again, with an invoice more than $10,000. If we had one student at a school and it was $4,000 a month, you're not gonna see it on here. But these are, these are the schools where we send more students to, or they may have a residential student, which would lead to a high expense. And these are all places, students are placed based upon their IEPs, they work with our special education department, and they're placed here. And I'll talk a little more about that when we get to the financial review.
Can I ask one question about that?
Sure.
The two highest ones, Lighthouse and Melmark, are those monthly invoices? Or are those, are those like a six-month or something?
Lighthouse, that's probably the total amount we paid to Lighthouse last year.
Okay.
They do, we had up, we had about 18 and 19 students there, it's down to about nine now. Their costs have skyrocketed the last few years. It's about $115,000 a year to send a student there, they don't have summer programming, and it's not residential. It's very, very expensive, so we're looking when students, we used to, it used to be a kind of a go-to place, because it's in Chelmsford, but they've really, the costs have skyrocketed. So, you know, not to say that that's the reason you send a student somewhere, but, you know, you look at various factors in deciding what's best for the student.
Well, and I will say, we've, with the expectancy of our Brentwood program to continue to grow, I think there might be some other options there, so that's good.
Correct.
Could you, I mean, is there any way of us knowing how many children are ready to school?
That, we'll probably have that available for you when we do the budget presentation, that's something we typically put together.
Okay.
But just for your ballpark, the last couple of years, our number of students that were in out-of-district placements were 90 to 100. Right now, we're down to about 78 or so, which seems to be a little bit of a, I think COVID affected the students going out.
Thank you.
All right, then there's supplies, and these are plan off supplies and services, you can, you know, the national chemical, that's where we, the floor waxes, et cetera, there's the maintenance agreements that we have with Siemens and Control Technologies on the HVAC, other FW-Web's a supply place. So, and then when you look at the bottom of that section, you can see the Promocentric, the Winbrook and Allheart, those are sort of things related to COVID. So we ordering various PPE-type supplies. So I note, I'll note with those that it says grant, so a lot of the grant on the PPE, that would be the Esser funding. Books and supplies, these are, as I say, books and supplies, most of these are either part of a curriculum, and most of them have gone through the curriculum committee for Services in general, there's, probably pick out a few of the higher, the Adult Learning Center is the Clearway School, Clark Associates and ABC, those are occupational and physical therapy services. We have the outside service, do those, we don't have internal staff in those areas. And then the Wilson Language, which is another large one in there, that's the Foundations, which is one of the new curriculums that started, I think, about a year or so ago, so that was to purchase the supplies for that. So any other questions in that area? Okay, then next is computer supplies and services. What you'll see in this area is purchase of computer hardware and our annual software licenses, so a lot of our software license, that, once again, you'll see in the budget, you'll see a list of all of them, a lot of them are the, we just, you pay the license in July or August of each year, and it's it's, it's good for the whole year. But you can see, that's an area that costs have been going up because that's kind of how the software companies make their money. So, and you can look down and you'll notice some of these on the second page there, when there's some new items where it'll say for the software for remote learning, the CSO learning, for example, that was used at the elementary level when we were remote. And then we actually renewed that again this year for other reasons. But, so there were some of these items, some of these softwares that were purchased for remote reasons, some of which we've kept and some of which we haven't. Okay, and then equipment, fairly straightforward what it is. It's, you know, some vehicles that were paid for with the SURF funds, the city funds, some of the IT wiring and hardware work that was done. The 299,000 specialized purchasing consultants, that's the copier contract and funding for the copies. So there's nothing too crazy in there. Then there's a conference and registration. That's part of the CTE grant. That's paid for by the Perkins Grant each year. Under miscellaneous, Donors Choose, which is, there's $50,000 in the budget each year that we put into Donors Choose and teachers use that to put forward their programs. In there is the, under Grace Fellowship, that was the first payment on the Franklin Street School of 600,000. And then YMCA, the Summer School Program that we've been doing with them the last couple of years. We subbed that out to them. Then there's a new line this year, Legal Settlements, which I don't like to see, but it's there. These are some of the payments. Some payments were made directly to individuals, which wouldn't show up here, but this is something that I'm hoping will go away over time. And then the last piece is pretty much most of the work being done at the middle school project. So you can see significant numbers there for Harvey Construction and Harriman. They're the architect and the construction manager for the middle school project. So I'm pretty sure everything in that is items. So those would have all been charged to the bond for the middle school project. So that gives you a sort of sense, there was 34.4 million dollars worth of invoices over 10,000 when you add them all up. Okay? Any questions?
The Adult Learning Center is down there twice, so I wasn't sure why.
Yes, because we have a, part of it's for the special ed and part of it's for typical students. So there's sort of two separate contracts.
How do the typical students end up going there?
Referred by high school principals and guidance counselors.
Okay, thanks.
Typically kids that are struggling for one reason or another in a large environment and that's a much smaller environment. Shorter days, smaller environment, little more hands-on.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Brown, did you have a question?
I was just going to make a motion.
Okay.
I move to approve the annual report of invoices over $10,000.
I'll second.
Ms. Lampier?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Ms. Brown votes yes, motion passes.
Perfect. Now we're going to the FY '22 December Financial Report.
Okay, excuse me. So since Ms. Lampier's new, if you want to ask any questions, I tried to, what I've been doing is I'll take the report that shows the month by month. There's two reports that we typically share with the board. So I use the one that's sort of July through June and it shows the expense by month so you can sort of compare them. That's the one I usually discuss. So what I'll, typically what I do is just highlight things that I, as I review it each month. So if you have any questions about what a line is for, anything at any point, can ask tonight or send me information or whatever, we can.
I have, I have one question already. There's a column that says ENC/commit. I don't know what that stands for.
Those are encumbrances or commitments. So basically if we've, we've put a purchase order into the system, then we've encumbered the funds, we just haven't spent them yet.
Okay, thank you.
Whereas the other items are actually, we've sent checks out the door. Okay, so basically salaries and wages, which is typically about 80% of our costs. You will notice in the month of December that that number under wages full-time is quite high, 9.4 million compared to the other months. But since we work on a cash basis, you have, we had five weekly payrolls and three bi-weekly payrolls in the month. So that's why it's so high in December. The 6.7 and the 6.5 is typically a four-weekly and a two-bi-weekly. So, and that's why both wages full-time and wages part-time are higher than typical. Overtime bumped up a bit more than it had been running and I think most of that is due to the biddy basketball. We do get reimbursed by the Parks Department for that. We bill them at the end of the month, at the end of each month. So that credit will come back in. We probably haven't got any money yet, but, okay. Wages per diem, that's our subs. You can see it's going up a little bit. So we have had a little more activity, but keep in mind, that was a five-week month too. So it's not to say that suddenly we have subs all over the place because we don't. Wages elected officials is the payments made to the board. So the additional hours, 21,000. 10 of that this month was the music lessons that are given out by, we have about, I think about 70,000 to 80,000 that we put in the budget each year for music lessons, instrument lessons specifically for the students. Stipends, this month you'll notice it's higher, it's 114,000. And the reason for the, is that the high school sports coaches were paid. That was 105,000 of that 114,000, with the rest of it being head teacher stipends for the most part. Retirement and separation pay, the last teacher that had their name on the list, that showed up. So all the teachers that we knew about that were retiring, that received their payment, those are now all in. So the only cost going forward for the rest of the year there will be as people leave during the year and they may have accrued vacation or something, we have to pay them their vacation. So unless there's somebody that leaves in the last five months that's at a significant level, then it shouldn't be too much, too much more cost on that line for the rest of the year. Okay, fringe benefits, as I said, that's all allocated from the city. So if we save money, they keep it. If it goes over, they pay it. Professional and technical services, nothing, we did pay the first half of the medical service, which is the doctor that helps out our nurses. We give him a stipend each year. And you can notice that the last two line items there, the pupil support services, contract services, with the holidays in there, we had less of OTPT. We had less of those services being provided because we were closed down for part of that Flipping over to page two, you see the property services and the first three, the utilities, electric, heating, gas and water. Comparing where we were last year to where we are this year, the electric, actually, I went back and looked at fiscal year '20 because '21, since we weren't in the schools, the numbers were a lot lower. So comparing it to the previous year, we were at 963 in electricity, we're at 956 now, so that's pretty close. Water was 73 to 95 and the heating gas is 159. It was 144 same time last year. So all in a ballpark where you'd expect it. Other than that, most of those, the other contracts are maintenance that Mr. Smith manages. The rental, you can see for the first time, there's a charge there. That's the swim team at the Boys and Girls Club. Okay, telephone and these other services, like I said, mostly small items until you get to the very bottom of the page. So there's really not, not too much to say there. The transportation services, as you can see, they weren't entered for the month of December, so we're a month behind on those. So we should see next month, we'll see, we'll see that number bump up. So it was just a timing of when the invoice got received and when it got entered into the system. And if you take a look at page three, you'll see the sped transportation services, which would also include, as I mentioned, Durham and some of those smaller ones, though still the biggest cost is first. And you can notice that in December, there were, those invoices didn't get entered into the system either. Now tuition out of district, we talked about that a bit ago and you can sort of take a look, that November and December were really quite low. We were way behind. We had someone leave that department that was managing those. So they get kind of clogged up for about a month. We should see in January and February, those numbers go up much higher. The invoices are now caught up and they're put in. We had our first meeting of the year to look at what we project our out-of-district tuition to be, because that's something that's always, it's something that's very difficult to control. We don't truly have a full control over, at least I don't, from a financial point of view. If kids come in and we need to send those kids out, it's not up to Dan Donovan where they send them or how much we pay. So historically, we've been way over budget on that line item. We have bumped it up, the budget up in the last couple of years. At this point in time, since the number of students has gone down, like I said, in the high 70s, it looks like we actually may be okay on that line for the first time in probably six years. Now, it could change. Few students move in, things happen, we shall see. But at this point, after the first meeting, we'll be meeting monthly going forward. We review each one of the students from a cost point of view and take a look at it, so.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
The September for the special ed section, it's so much different for the transportation services and for the other contracted services. And it seemed like a weird month for it to be so low.
Yes, and that's going to be, there'll be a catch-up in there.
Okay.
It's, and I spent a little time on that a couple of weeks ago and said, what's going on here? These invoices aren't getting in. So first student, interesting, very large company. You would think one of the most important things is cash flow. Beginning of every year, they're behind, they're always like a month late on getting their first set of invoices out to us. It's, I find it kind of interesting, but, and then like I said, the December ones didn't get in. I don't know exactly, was it internal, was it them, but I think you're going to see a big, big number in January. And I also with those, we have a Google Doc where my administrative assistant will then fill in so I can compare this to the actual invoices and I can, I can see which months aren't in and if there's costs that are just delayed, so.
Okay, thanks. I just want to make sure I'm understanding everything, but thank you.
Yes. Okay, supplies and materials, not really, you know, there's supplies and materials, there's nothing too surprising or out of sync there. The indirect cost allocation, that's basically the revenue we get from doing, doing the work for the grants. When you do a federal government grant, you're allowed to take a certain percent, which is your overhead rate. Typically, it's around 2% to 2.5% and you can sort of take that as a credit. So we, we take that and that's a credit to our, our financial statements. Typically, the budget there is about 210,000. We'll probably be over that this year because of the CARES funds. If there's a grant that can't afford this, then we don't charge it. We just use it for all the costs for the grant. But most of the grants, we do take that. Okay, equipment, computer equipment, most of those costs are spent early in the year, so there's not too much more there. Same with the software, you can see in July, by far the largest number in August, and then it'll be small going forward. There's probably a few softwares that aren't on the cycle that we like to have, but we have a new line, security equipment this year. Haven't really spent too much of that yet. And then furniture and fixtures and miscellaneous equipment, they're well within the budget at this point, so we'll keep an eye on those a little closer. Debt service is done for the year. That's basically the copier contract and the new contract for the work, the energy savings work done at the two high schools. That's what that 454 is. So I'll talk more about that in another month or two, because we're, basically, we agreed to this, to this contract with the vendor and we should be saving as much money as it cost us to put all the equipment in. Okay? So this is the very first payment. The thing that's going to be a little tricky is they finished the work in like November and December. We had to make the payment, sort of a full-year payment. We may not get the full-year savings in year one, so we're going to have to talk about that because they guarantee us that we'll save at least this amount each year. If not, they're going to pay us the difference. Though we do have some rebates coming in the first year that wouldn't come every other year. So it's a little tricky in year one. I think going forward, it'll be a lot more straightforward. And so that, that pretty much gets us to the end. If you take a look on the bottom right, it says percent used, 43.08%. We're six twelfths of the month, of the months through the calendar year, that's 50%. We're four tenths through the school year, that's 40%. And typically, that's where you'll see that percent used, somewhere between 40 and 50. So all in all, I think, I think things are fine. I will be doing more of a detailed forecast in the next couple of months. I do that through the end of the year. So, but we're working on the budget now, so we'll, budget first, forecast second.
Any questions? Did you need me to make a motion to accept this? Was it just a transfer?
It just goes in the consent agenda, I think. I don't think you typically.
I can't remember between these two. And the transfer report is next.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, transfer report, we'll just run through them quick, not too, too many. So the first one is E-rate, which is where we get funding back from the federal government. We purchased 400 Chromebooks. We had to front the money to get the good price and then E-rate submission will come in and we'll pay this back. So this was just, I took the money from the heating gas account because they didn't have that much in the equipment account. And then when, when the E-rate money comes in, I'll replace it to the, to the heating gas account. So this was just sort of borrowing money within our own accounts. Next one is, you'll notice the CTE program, when they budgeted this year, they had new people, they budgeted everything in like two or three accounts and now they're starting to spend it in different places. So this is just moving from mileage reimbursement to the supplies account to cover supplies. The next one, Nashua High School South, they're moving from supplies to equipment to purchase The next one, High School North. The next one, High School North, there were, as it says, 11 replacement chairs that were vandalized by students. I did reach out to the principal, and as part of the student's response, I'll say, is to pay back the school for the chairs. So they'll be doing that. They didn't have the money immediately, but they're going to be paying that back.
And on that one, it said that it was done by two students, 11 chairs by two students?
Yep.
That's a lot of chairs. And I'm glad that we're having the students pay us back. I mean, that's called responsibility. You damage, you fix it, you pay for it. Thank you.
Okay, the next one is another CTE entry, just moving it between two different accounts, repairs and maintenance to supplies. The next one is, you've seen a few of these this year. With the inability to find full-time staff, we forced to take money out of labor accounts and put it into contracted services. Because to get some of these services done, it's been mostly in special education or required to provide the services, and we have to pay a contracted service. It's more expensive that way. It's much more expensive, but some things you can put off and other things you can't. So we have used some funding for these things through ESER. We've been able to get some of those in, so, but not all. Okay, and then the next one on the back, number 97. This was, when we opened Franklin Street, we put in the budget, a couple of custodians, few other things. We didn't put a nurse in, because we had a plan that we were gonna take a nurse that was working with a student one-on-one, who was then going to free up this school year, and we were gonna put that person at Franklin Street. Well, that person didn't free up, so we basically didn't have any budget lines for Franklin Street nurse, but we needed a nurse there. So it was basically just funding the nurse line, and that's what we're doing. So that, that position will be in the new budget. It just was not in this budget. Okay, and then the last one is, it's just the, the adult community school transferring from advertising to miscellaneous supplies to buy chairs. That is a quick explanation of the transfers.
Do we need a motion to accept those?
I think if this, yes, you do, because if they're over 10,000, there are a couple that are.
On the transfer, okay. I'll make a motion to accept the FY '22 December transfer report.
Second, Ms. Lampier?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Brown votes yes, motion passes.
I know we're gonna go into non-public, but I have a question for you, because I've had a lot of parents asking me, people in the community, can we get it upgraded in here, so we can do Zoom and have people call in, just like they do at the Board of Alderman? I hear Jimmy back there laughing. Not gonna happen, he says.
All right, Jimmy knows more than I do on that.
Okay, Jimmy, do you want to come and join the meeting with us? He's such a great guy, we love him. So I guess that's the answer for everybody to hear, it's not gonna happen.
Yeah, I mean, it was discussed about a year or so ago. Haven't really looked into it since then.
You know, people are, you know, you can watch the Board of Alderman, you can call in, you can Zoom in, but you can't do it here. So, and people have been saying, ask the city if we can move our meeting over to the automatic chambers for the full board meeting, so people can call in or Zoom in. They've got 15 seats, there's only nine of us, so we could spread out. And, but, too bad, we, I hear somebody from the back there who keeps saying it's not gonna happen. Could you check into it?
I'll, I'll see what I can do, sure.
Okay, perfect. And that's the end of our meeting, but we need to go into non-public. So I'm going to make a motion that we're gonna end the meeting at, who's gonna make a motion to, I'll move that, the meeting, we close this meeting at 7:55?
Second, and Ms. Lampier?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes. Oh, wait a second. I didn't say why we're going into non-public. Well, backtrack that.
Oh, so are we gonna open a new meeting, or are we going to, or just, we shouldn't adjourn?
We shouldn't adjourn yet.
Okay, so I withdraw the.
Withdraw, second. Okay, we need to go into non-public under RSA, which one did I say? RSA 91A colon 3 to C.
One second. And Ms. Lampier?
Sure.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Ms. Brown votes yes?
And we're going into non-public at 7:56.